Good evening. I have seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and please announce the, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Present.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Pastor Mark Poson to lead us in prayer. Mark Poson.
Thank you very much. Let's pray. Father, we're thankful for this day, the coolness of this weather and the beauty. Father, we're reminded of a fall and we're anticipating the beauty of the fall color that you'll paint all the landscape. And we just declare that beauty comes from you. And Father, we thank you for the mayor, for city council members, for the city manager and staff, for the way that they serve this community. Thank you for Chief Atterbury, our officers who provide for the safety of our community. Father, we just pray that you would just bless the meeting, that all the decisions, all the discussions, you would provide wisdom and discernment, and Father, that it would bless those who call Bel Air home. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in pleading allegiance to the American flag.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is determine agenda additions. Does anyone have any additions to make to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. There are actually two. Consent agenda contains the minutes of September 2nd, regular city council meeting, and September 9th, special meeting. And as we didn't have a meeting on September 16th, there is no agenda or minutes for that meeting, so. There are no concerns with the, those minutes. I'm going to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. On discussions and approval appropriations ordinance. So we do have two appropriation ordinance just tonight. The AP ordinance 2517 encompasses expenses from August 27th through September 9th, and the expenditures amount to $525,713. Of the reported expenses, $11,300 or $240, $31 are infrastructure costs for new developments, and these costs are paid through special assessments. We'll entertain a motion for appropriation orders 2517.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move, we approve appropriation ordinance number 25-17.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any discussion? And hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Second AP ordinance is 2518, and it encompasses expenses from September 10th through September 30th, and expenditures amount to $3,155,586. Of those reported expenses, $856,744 are infrastructure costs for new developments, and these costs are paid through special assessments. Any questions or concerns with the ordinance 2518?
Does this, does this cover two pay periods? I was wondering why it was so high.
I would have to defer to our city manager if you can answer that question. I do not remember. It does have almost a million dollars in specials in it.
Yeah.
So that would be part of it.
Yes, it does say it's two payroll cycles.
It is? Okay, thank you. But we don't spend a million dollars on payroll.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the appropriations ordinance number 25-18.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Dean. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is city requested appearances, and Chief Atterbury is here to present tonight for a special presentation.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having us tonight. I've got three awards to present tonight. So first, I'll do them in chronological order. Sergeant Davis, while he's coming up, I'll let you know what happened. On the 3rd of September, at about 11 o'clock at night, Sergeant Davis was down at the Quick Trip at 37th and Rock Road on a break, and a man approached him and asked if he had Narcan. Narcan is the, the drug that we administer when somebody's having an opioid overdose. Yeah, so he asked the guy why he was asking. He says, "I just smoked some, some fentanyl." And he thought he was overdosing, and he was. And I would say that if he were at home alone, his family would probably be planning a funeral because it affects people that badly. But since Sergeant Davis was there, he was able to administer Narcan to the man, monitor his health, get him emergency personnel to respond to the location. They transported him to the hospital for treatment, and he survived. For that, Sergeant Davis is awarded the lifesaving award with a pin on his uniform. Officer Olden, then. On the 9th of September, at about 7:43 in the morning, Officer Olden was working over to cover a, an empty shift. He and I responded to a call for assistance at the Lisi Apartments. The dispatcher had only heard a slight voice asking for assistance over the phone. There was trouble identifying which apartment it came from, the call came from. Of course, the police response is often the first response. So Officer Olden got to the door, knocked, no response. Then he tried the doorknob, and it was unlocked. So he made entry into the apartment and found a subject unresponsive, not breathing, no respiration, and then no heartbeat. He pulled her onto the floor, did an assessment, and then started CPR. So with that, we used an Ambu bag, was able to get back a respiration and a heartbeat. EMS responded with fire personnel, sorry, and they were able to resuscitate the woman twice and get her back into a condition where she could be transported to the hospital, and she survived. For that, Officer Olden is awarded the lifesaving award. And the third is Officer Trumble. This happened on September 23rd. It was a busy month for us rendering medical aid. Officer Trumble responded to a group home over on Granite Court, which is just south of the high school. And there was an unconscious, unresponsive subject in the basement. He went in and found the man and called for assistance. EMS and fire were on the way. And after that assessment, he started CPR and continued until other lifesaving equipment arrived with EMS and fire. He was able to sustain the man until EMS and fire took over. They were able to bring him back because he was gone. And with that resuscitation effort by Officer Trumble and EMS and fire, they were able to get him transported to the hospital where he survived. With that, Officer Trumble is awarded lifesaving award and a pin for his uniform. I would add that because of our proximity to the county and the, our Station 37 and our EMS units do a fantastic job of response, but sometimes, sometimes we're the closest ones. So we have AEDs in our vehicles, defibrillators, and we have some basic lifesaving equipment with us. But in situations like this where we were able to be on scene and be that first responder, we're able to make a difference. So that's what they did. Thank you.
Very good. Great job, guys. This is one of the reasons I support the training and equipment of our officers so that they can take care of these things, because there's no way you can predict this is going to happen. But when they have the training and the support and the equipment, they can take care of matters, and that's very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is the citizens' concerns. Do we have any citizens that wish to speak to council? Hearing none, we'll move on to council member reports. So Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended the CCU meeting, filled in for mayor and chaired that meeting. Progress continues on the plant expansion. Not much else I'd report from that September 25th meeting here. Appreciated waste connections on Saturday with the curbside cleanup. That is a great, twice a year event that we have in our contract with them, where you don't have to round up a truck and get your things to the dump. So appreciate that. And then I think most of us received notice that a resident had brought up the issue of golf carts. Wichita has a golf cart ordinance. It's not the first time I've heard it around here. It'd be kind of nice whether we went for it or not. I think it would be worth discussing at a workshop maybe at some point, hear from staff and police about their thoughts. So that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Smith.
I have nothing to add.
Mr. David.
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the CCU, and it was a tough month for our plant. It was a combination of, we weren't really sure what the issues were, but we had terrible effluent. It was one of the worst I've ever seen since I've been on the board. They thought it was partly due to the controller, the PLC, that was either getting bad sensor data or, or somehow, anyway, they think, you think that's fixed, and then it could have been a sampling error. But anyway, it was one of the worst months we've had in a long time. On another note, I attended the Bel Air Area Chamber of Commerce meeting here at the City Hall where we had Senator Stephen Owens. It was very educational and interesting discussion. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do have a few items. It's been a little bit longer of time since our last meeting, so bear with me a couple here. On September 25th, I helped host a webinar for the K254 Corridor Development Association members. The purpose of this webinar was to help prepare for KDOT Local Consult meeting. On the 2nd of October, just earlier, last, I guess, last week, I attended the WSU Economic Outlook Conference that was really engaging and informing, saw a lot of other local and regional leaders and business leaders. And then if you haven't heard about KDOT Local Consult, I'm going to plug that a little bit right now. So I do plan to attend, and I believe Mayor will be attending as well. And there are lots of other folks from K254 that'll be attending to represent the K254 corridor highway. There are also a lot of other local and regional leaders that will be there. That meeting is tomorrow. It's actually at the Hughes Metroplex at 29th and Oliver from 9:00 to noon. Anyone in the community that is interested in advocating for transportation is invited to that meeting. It is a public, open to anybody that wants to show up. And it really comes down to advocating for improvements to our regional transportation system. So I actually do have some handouts that we put together for that webinar. If anybody does plan to attend and would like a copy of that, it would be helpful for you. I'll also be there tomorrow. So if you do come, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll do what I can to help get you up speed. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll go on Mayor's report, and bear with me. It's going to be fairly long, because it has been a long time since we've met. The picture on the screen, you know, there was one up there earlier. There it is. That's several of us at the CEDBR conference that Mr. Dean referred to last week. This is the equivalent of a modern day phone booth picture. So at the top of the left, right, left to right is myself, Pat Stevers, the mayor of Mays, and Russ Kessler, the mayor of Hayesville. Marcy Acock is at the bottom left. Marcy does a lot of work for the K254 Development Association and REAP. I kind of know the rest of the folks in the picture, but will most likely get their names wrong, so I'm not going to venture there and try to misidentify them. So when people stop talking, really bad stuff starts. When marriages stop talking, divorce happens. When civilizations stop talking, civil war ensues. When you stop having human connection with someone you disagree with, it becomes a lot easier for, to want to commit violence against that group. What we as a culture have to get back to is being able to have reasonable disagreement where violence is not an option. These were the words of late Charlie Kirk. He said, "For freedom of speech." He was a remarkable debater and always respectful of those with whom he was debating. Americans lost a great orator and a great lover of freedom on September 10th with the assassination of Charlie Kirk. Eternal rest grant upon him, oh Lord, and let perpetual light shine upon him. May his soul and the souls of all the peacefully departed, through the mercy of God, rest in peace. We pray for the consolation of his family as well. On September 3rd, Ted Henry and I attended the meeting of wholesale users of Wichita Water. Basically, Gary Jansen reviewed the new restrictions during the meeting and answered questions. He agreed a good idea for Wichita to develop a preferred grass list so that there is some guidance as to what grasses species are another, other than fescue are appropriate for lawns in the metro area. On September 4th, I attended the REAP Regional Water Summit. This had some interesting information, mostly nothing that was actionable in the summit, but it was good to get better understanding of issues with water throughout Kansas. I did share the PowerPoint slides with all the city council members. On September 8th, I attended the USD 259 School Board meeting where they approved exceeding the RNR rate. USD 259 is maintaining their mill levy, which will increase taxes for almost everyone. They did this in spite of the fact that they have lower bond payments in 2026. They just shuffled the excess mill levy to operations. I pointed that out to them, they, that they are the outliers in my tax bill. They are the only ones to effectively raise the mill levy by shuffling the bond payment to operations. On September 9th, I attended WAMPO Policy Board meeting. There was a lot, a lot of new activity for this month. The annual bike count was just completed, and we'll have a report on that in the next couple of months. They made some minor adjustments to the project evaluation methodology scoring for in line, to be in line with the requirements of the US DOT and the city Andover Day, a good presentation on activity in Andover. Bel Air will be giving a similar presentation in November, and I hope Mr. Henry's ready for that. On September 10th, the Utility Advisory Committee met with the Bel Air staff, Ted Henry and myself, who discussed guidelines for development of a revised water conservation plan. They are beginning to collect data and start to rework the water conservation plan, working with Bel Air staff to better utilize the software tools that Bel Air has invested. September 13th, I attended the Central County Association of Cities meeting in Bentley. We heard a presentation from Second Line, who is operating the new homeless center in Wichita, and they expect that rehab construction to be completed by the end of the year. Election Commissioner was also there, and she said she still needs election workers for the November 4th election. So if anybody would like to sign up for that, they certainly can, except if you are a candidate, you may not participate in election office work while you're a candidate. On September 17th, I attended a meeting on Workforce Development Policy Roundtable concerning was raised about the Trump administration's Make America Skilled Again proposal to combine with multiple grants into one block grant to be given to each state, for state to decide how to split up the money among various programs. This has a lot of merit in that the federal government knows little about each state's specific needs. Fear was expressed that each governor may not fund the way that local organizations see fit. However, Congress so far has not gone along with this idea and has worked on individual program funding. They had a follow-up meeting today I attended. Wasn't really a lot of new information there, so I, I didn't, not much to report there. Senator Marshall's Representative Jennifer Basingler did state at the conference she recently attended, an AI will eliminate about half the entry level jobs in the marketplace. That will be a major shift of how, how we need to prepare. There's an opportunity to learn more about digital skills on the workforce website, which is www dot workforce dash KS dot com, under employees find programs for digital skills information. September 30th, I signed a letter to Kansas Paving concerning the Aurora Park project. We informed them they have 30 working days to complete this project, after which we will invoke the penalty clause of our contract. We will be charging them $750 per day for each day of delay in completion. It appears that has been effective. I observed that they were back working on October 2nd, and I didn't go by there today, so I don't know if they were doing anything today, but I do know that some progress has been made. On October 2nd, I attended the Economic Outlook Conference, as Mr. Dean had indicated. Lot of good information there. I wasn't really impressed with their assessment of the local area economy. They were, said it's kind of flat, but I know Spirit Aero is going to be repurchased by Boeing, and Spirit, Boeing is increasing the production rate of 737 from 38 per month to 42 per month. That's about a 13% increase rate. There are over 50 businesses in the local area, metro area that support that 737. So that's going to be a shot in the arm, and it's going to be a shot in the arm in the next few months. So I think that that's probably not as dismal as it was laid out. We'll see how that goes. Mr. Abulofia showed that Boeing's bookings for 737 MAX, Paul's, airbus's bookings for the A321 Neos, they're booking, Airbus is booking about four to five times the number of airplanes as Boeing is. So the near future of 737 is very good because they got a like 10-year backlog, but the long-term, Boeing's got some work to do. I did see in the Wall Street Journal that they announced that they are going to start developing a replacement aircraft for that, but it'll take them 10 years to do that. I did hear from Mr. Ed O'Malley at the CBDR. He's with the Kansas Health Foundation, and he spoke on issues that have been a concern of mine for many years, that of focusing on capital H health, instead of focusing on small H healthcare. Healthcare, which I often call sick care, is treating those who are sick or injured. Mr. O'Malley's concerns are much in line with issues being fostered by RFK Junior, Secretary of Health and Human Services. I think we all can improve our lifestyles to improve our overall health. For me, this is a constant effort, with small gains from time to time. And lastly, of note, the conference was Miles Bassett, who is the founder and CEO of Prairie Code AI. He spoke about how everyone of us needing to learn to utilize AI, and he gave some useful information on how to get started. I did download his 12-page paper on this, and I can share it with anybody who's interested. I was not able to attend the CCU meeting last week due to a late minute, last minute issue. So thank you, Ms. Hamburg, for taking over leadership of that, and Justice Smith for covering for me in the last minute. And Tyler Dean had talked about the consult for tomorrow. Tyler's done a lot of good work on that, and we appreciate your efforts in that area as well. So I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item to give the council an update about, and it is from the alcohol beverage control. Control. They sent out letters to all cities and counties in August of this year. They wanted to make sure that we were informed of an upcoming change to the process of issuing cereal malt beverage retailer licenses. As of September 1, a new state CMB stamp was released, and it is to be used on all stamps, all applications after October 1. They sent us an applicant checklist on how to review the application. They sent us the new process as to what is being requested of all applicants, just to let the council know. An applicant will obtain their application, they will complete it, they will then submit it to the Alcohol Beverage Control. The Alcohol Beverage Control will review it. Once they've reviewed it, if they are going to authorize it, they will use their new state CMB stamp and affix it to that application. Then, if they do need a retail license from a city or a county, they will send us that approved application from the Alcohol Beverage Control with the new state stamp on it. So we need to be on the lookout to make sure that we see the new state CMB stamp affixed to that application, and then we would do our review. With this being a new process, if an applicant does not know what to do, we easily can provide them the applicant checklist that was provided to us. We can also share the letter that was sent to us to provide them guidance. What was the reason for this change? I did have a conversation with the agency, and this was for there to be consistency when reviewing those applications and to make sure that the new stamp is being used. I think overall, since there are so many cities and so many counties, this helps them to know exactly how many licenses are out there, how many are applying, how many are approved, and it was time to update the license. So that's just an update for council, and I have nothing else to provide.
Very good. Thank you. Move on to our manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, Chief, thank you for everything you do. It's nothing, you're amazing, you have amazing officers, but it all comes from the culture that you share. How many times do you go driving down the street and you see Chief pulling someone over, and maybe not for anything major, but I love that Chief leads with that type of culture, and I think it shows with the ways officers treat everyone in our community. And I just want to give him a special shout out. It's been said many time, local consul tomorrow, but I just want to admit, usually when something like this happens, Tyler and the mayor think I will, I will report it, but then I'll think they'll report it. So we got this covered three ways tonight, so I don't want to go into this. Next Monday is Columbus Day. Most banks are closed, and Ty Lash, or my previous, the previous city manager, started Professional Service Day, or Professionals Day for all staff. It's very rare that we all get able to get together in one room and do some training. And I felt like last year was all about ERP system setup. This year is all about instituting changes in the way we do business, our processes. So we have a speaker coming for all our employees that talk about navigating change. We have workplace safety training set up, computer security, cybersecurity is the number one thing. We have a person coming in, talking to all staff about how to protect themselves with city files and city assets, as well as represented from Capers, KPNF, and Capers 254 will be there. So city offices will be closed on Monday, but we're going to use that as an opportunity for all employees to get the necessary training they need and have. Fall Festival is October 18th. Very big event for the city. I just want you to mark your calendars. Will be more time to share some of that, but, and look for, on the website and social media for all the activities we have shared there. I always like to provide a data point, and I know the words out there, but every, every quarter I try to report residential permits. We have right now, compared to 2024, we're a little under, but we're still about 102 units permits. So as much as you hear national news, even regional news, I'll still report some of the key indicators that we have in our city that shows financial or economic health. As you know, lots of activity going on in Sunflower Commerce Park as well, a lot of businesses looking for room, and we just so happen to have a lot of rooms. So spending a lot of time with those companies, and we'll continue to promote Bel Air and what we do and what we represent. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, ready to move on to ordinance, resolutions, and final actions. First item, on September 2nd, the council authorized the sale of general obligation bonds, and these bonds will retire temporary notes for projects that were special assessed in September. Bids were taken earlier today, and the bonds have a 20-year term. Special assessments collected from the benefiting lots will cover the annual bond payments. Now, the ordinance and resolution items A and B are before the council for consideration. The ordinance finalizes the sale to the selected bidder, and with, while the resolution outlines further details. And Kevin Cowan is here to answer questions, and Adam Pope is joining us via Zoom. Is that, is he still, is he on? There he is. Okay. Very good. So we have a tag team here for you.
Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell, Cities Bond Council. I may hand this off to Adam if he wants to talk about sale results or any particular details in the market, and then I can take it from there.
Sure. Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, as, as, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we had bids received this morning for both the bonds and the notes. We'll talk about both the bonds and the notes here, even though there's three separate items here. The first two related to the bonds, and the third with the notes. Talk about both here, and then if there's any specific questions as we get to those each action items, we can, we can take those. We took bids first on the bonds. We had four bids this morning. The winning bidder was The Baker Group, which is a investment bank out of, out of Long Island. They were the winning bidder, and the cover bid was about four basis points less than them, and all told from the, the low bid to the, to the highest bid, about 14 basis point spread. So a very aggressive bid. It's always great to see it under 4%, especially these days. So we're very happy with that result. Also took bids for the notes, or about 30 minutes after the bonds, also had four bids there. The winning bidder was Piper Sandler, who I think has, has won either bonds or notes for the city in the past. You can see that they had a very aggressive bid of 3.059%. The cover bid was 3.24%, so about 19 basis points between the winning bid and the second place bid. I will note that the bonds, as they have been the last several years, the city maintained a double A minus rating. We had a call with S and P in mid-September, and as always, both Ted and Barry did a wonderful job providing all kinds of information, kind of above and beyond what the rating agency needed, and the analysts were very complimentary of, of, of that. And they're always interested to hear what's going on, Bel Air. You have such a unique city. They always are shocked at the number of permits going up and rooftops. So it was great to have the report with them. So the city maintained a double A minus rating. The bidder, Baker Group, did bid with bond insurance, so these, the, the underlying rating will be double A minus, but the bond insurance conveys a rating of double A on the bonds. And you can see in the summary, shows the, the bond insurance premium that will be paid to the, the bond insurer. As the mayor mentioned, the bonds are 20-year bonds, primarily special assessments. There is a city-at-large piece within these, but primarily special assessment. And then the, the notes are for various projects that are in process at several different of the neighborhoods around town. The only other Kansas bonds priced this week are, are City of Alatha, and actually our firm is advisor on those as well. Those are for utility revenue credits this morning for Alatha. So with that, happy to take any questions about the bonds, notes, or the process in
Did Alatha get a better deal than this?
Not quite apples and apples, right? Water sewer revenues are a little bit different than Geo, but, and it was a bit of a bigger deal. I think the, the Alatha deal was about 38 million versus 9 million, so you attract a little bit different bidding audience when you get up to that size. They had a few Wall Street firms show up, but we're very happy with getting the four bids. We hadn't, Baker Group, we hadn't seen those guys in a while, so it was good to see them, see them show up. They used to be pretty active, but good to show, see them show up and, and, and yeah, very happy with the result. It was better than, better than we expected going in, so should.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Can you explain the, the at-large expenses? Because I thought with the bonds, we were basically taking on risk if there's a issue later on with the development, but now I see that we have an 800,000-plus charge that at the at-large, the people of the city have to cover. What does that refer to?
I can address that, I think, and, and city manager may remember the specific stats for a share of a lift station. Is that correct, Ted? On, in the homestead development area, I mean, of the bonds, they're all payable from special assessments, and the only portion that city at large is like an oversized or a portion of a lift station that needed to be built to serve not only this development, but further growth, which occasionally will happen.
Okay, that's a city project, not necessarily a development project. This is something that, it's an infrastructure, an infrastructure charge. Okay.
It was needed to serve that particular development, but also to serve broader developments. And so that's sometimes when the city will get involved and say, "We needed this anyway, and so we'll bear a portion of that cost."
And, and we already have a development plotted in that area, so I, I don't think it, most of the time, it'll, it'll, they'll end up paying for our portion of that share. It's, it's more of a, an area that it, actually, no, Kevin, we're, we're.
Or is it along with? But city manager makes a good point. If the city at large is paying for a portion of a project that is otherwise being specially assessed, you can collect a benefit fee from a future development that will connect to and benefit from, if it's a lift station or something like that. You've done that, whether you realize it or not, over a number of years. Some of the water mains and sewer mains that have opened up, you know, development to the east and the west, you'll occasionally see, we're kind of getting close to the end of it, but you'll see special assessments, which were the, the improvements to serve the particular development, and then there will be something at the bottom that says benefit fee. And that's paying back the city for the investment it made, you know, 15 years ago.
For the expansion.
Yeah.
And there's actually a couple of those within this transaction, where the city's collecting those benefit fees, so.
Okay. I just wanted to understand that.
I was going to add, I took a little bit of time to look back. I'm always curious, and we've had interest rate movements, and the Fed has done this or that, compared to last year, and Adam, I don't know if you had done this, every year's different, bond size is different, but the, the true interest cost, which was, is sort of the average true interest cost to the city, which is how you award the bids last year, was 3.94 on your 20-year general obligation bonds, and this year it is 3.94. And I was curious, you know, well, what's the difference? And, and Adam could have told us this already and probably knows all the reasons why, but the range of yields or rates of this year, from early years to late years, like you're going to have lower interest rates on the, the earlier years, there's less risk of holding a two-year bond compared to a one-year bond. That range this year is 2.55 to 4.35 at the long end, and last year it was 2.9 to 4. And, and again, Adam could explain all this, but the Fed's actions usually impact short-term interest rates, so those have come down, you've done better on that. And then the longer-term interest rates have crept up a little bit, and, I mean, you can read the newspaper, I think there's some thought of concerns about inflation or tariffs or longer, just questions. We don't know what the next 20 years will be like. We're pretty comfortable with what the Fed's doing for the next couple of years. At least that's how I sort of interpret it, Adam. So correct what I?
No. Yeah, no, that's great. No, yeah, that's good. And, and you can see it kind of clearly with the temp notes, 3 point, called 3.06% this year, last year just under 3.4%. So again, as Kevin mentioned, we just had a Fed cut a couple of weeks ago, 25 basis points. You can kind of see, that's pretty close to that 25 basis points there. And we've had, yeah, the curve remains inverted, but it has continued to flatten out a bit, and the short end has come down a little bit, and long end has gone up, gone up a little bit. So, but all in all, I think, you know, a, a great result, great result for the city on both the bonds and the notes.
Okay, thank you.
So in terms of formal action, and the mayor mentioned that you have a bond ordinance to consider. It's shorter, sort of recites the list of projects that will be permanently financed that are going to special assessments, we're paying off the temporary notes, and it references a longer bond resolution that will contain all the terms and details we just mentioned, all those interest rates. So it's ordinance and resolution. Within the resolution, you are authorizing the mayor to sign the winning bid with The Baker Group. So it's those two actions, and then the temporary notes, we don't need an ordinance to issue those, so we just simply have a resolution that's longer and has the interest rate details we've been discussing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or David.
One more question, Mr. Cowan or Mr. Pope. The attachments show, this summary shows just under 9 million, and the attachments show 9.3 on one document and 9.5 on the, 9.4 on the other. What's the difference in those numbers?
So today, based on the pricing, there were premium bids, and so you're right, what we drafted last week, the estimate on the bonds was 9,405,000, I believe. We took this information from the sale today and updated those documents, so everywhere you see 9,405 is now the 8,955, and some of it's just timing, hitting your agenda packets but not having the sale until today. So the finalized documents do exist. They were sent to the city this afternoon. The only thing that's changed is the numbers we've talked about, and then we've added the, the bond insurance that was referenced and the purchaser information, The Baker Group.
Thank you.
Okay. But to your point, there was almost $400,000 in premium bid. So instead of 9,400, you need something closer to 9 million to, to take care of all of the costs that you're paying off with the temporary notes.
Just a slight aside, did anybody prepay any other specials? Okay.
Which surprised me, I mean, there's usually a handful that will pay in part or something, but there were no prepayments.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Money's a little tighter. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I motion to approve an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2025A of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, providing for the levy and the collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and making certain covenants with respect thereto, and authorize all required signatures. I'll second.
I have most, Mr. Smith, and second, Mr. David. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And move on to item B, which is the resolution related to these bonds, or this bond. I'll turn motion to, for the resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or David.
I'll motion to adopt the resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing. and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation bonds, series twenty-twenty-five-A of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number seven-four-eight of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith, and authorize all required signatures.
Second.
Mr. Motion by Mr. David, and second by Mr. Dean. Any questions, discussions on the resolution? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And move on to item C. We're now ready to consider the resolution for the twenty-twenty-five-B temporary note. Again, Kevin Cowan here to answer questions, and Adam Pope is still on Zoom. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt consideration of a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation temporary notes, series twenty-twenty-five-B of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, providing for the levian collection of an annual tax, if necessary, for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith, and authorize all required signatures.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, and second by Mr. Dean. Any questions or discussions on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Move on to item D. Developer of this Skyview at Webb Edition Phase One is ready to begin engineering design for Phase One, and this agreement is complete and comes before you for consideration. The staff and Mr. Jason Gish with MKEC are here, available to answer any questions. Mr. Gish.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Worked with Maria on this quite a bit, and she did a great job, and we found a way to get to a point where I think you have a very good contract to move forward with for business such as ours, and helping the developers develop in the city. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
So this is, oh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So this is with MKEC?
So the agreement would be us in representation of the developer as their agent, working on behalf of the city as the consultant for-
Who are you with?
MKEC Engineering.
Okay.
At four-eleven North Webb Road. And we would be doing the, the developers, we've, we've done the plating, and as part of that, it's typical that the design engineer for the plating would, would assist with the engineering infrastructure design on behalf of the city. And then we would also be covering the staking that is requested during construction by the contractor. So there's kind of two parts to this agreement, one for the design, and then the other half, the latter part for staking.
Well, for me, since with the Woodlawn project, MKC did not seem to stand behind their work, and legal means is not, in my mind, I wouldn't consider that standing behind your work. So I can't vote for a project that is utilizing a firm that doesn't seem to stand behind what they do. So it's gonna be a no vote for me.
Understand that, sir. I'm not gonna take the time to rebut that very long, although I think there's litigation or things that are occurring right now related to that. And I think, once we get through that, you'll understand that we have a good reputation, and we do stand behind our work, and there's some circumstances that probably have much more to do with that than anything we had to do. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay.
So just as a refresher for council, typically, a developer selects the engineering firm they want to do their work for a particular development. We would select engineering firms for city, large projects, but when a developer comes in and says, I want to develop this particular area of land, they select the engineering firm they want to do that. And that's what's happened here in this case, as this developer has come and said they want to use MKEC to do this. So that's, that's the reason this is before us this way. But just as a refresher of, of the process there. So, okay.
I understand that, and I'd like to throw in my three cents here. I, I really don't want to vote for something with a company that we're currently in litigation with. It may be totally different departments, it may all work out perfect in three weeks or tomorrow night, I don't know, but at this point in time, we are in conflict, and I don't think we should do that. Next, I really would like to see a way forward for every project to quit doing so much with specials, and I, I don't have a problem with the developer wanting to use MKEC or any other company that he wants. I do kind of believe, though, that he should be the one borrowing the money or putting it up for this instead of being assessed as specials in three years against somebody that had no idea who was doing what.
Yeah, Mr. Welch, I can understand that. We work in lots of different states and areas, and every governing body has different mechanisms that they utilize for development. Currently, my understanding is Bel Air's adopted the state statute that does allow special assessments, and so therefore the developer, myself acting on his behalf, would request that the city proceed to honor the, the process that's currently in place for city infrastructure.
I, I understand that, and, but my problem is, you know, when, when anybody says we've always done it that way, that usually means they don't know why, and we need to really look at that and see if we're really doing it the right way, or if we should be changing the way we're doing it.
I can tell you my understanding of the history of, behind it.
I, I don't need that. I know the history of specials and all that, and who gets paid and what goes on, and I'd like to see specials end. If I, if I could do it, no specials for anybody.
I'm not here to argue that.
Yeah, okay. I'm just stating a viewpoint. I'm not arguing it either.
Yeah, certainly, something we could have a discussion about it at a workshop. The, the typical reason we do it today is because you can't, you can't get better interest rates on the market than, than a municipal bond can do. That's the main reason for it. But there's all kinds of nuances to that, and I don't, I don't mean to get into those.
Yeah, because you're also paying it off faster, which means your payment is higher because you're paying it over twenty years instead of thirty.
Some of that too.
And it used to be they paid off in fifteen, now we stretched them out to twenty.
Yeah, like I said, there's lots of nuances to it.
Yeah, that's, that's why I think it should, the whole thing should be revisited, and, and I'd love to find a way to do away with specials.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I do have clarification, Mr. Gish, on, on the scope. You mentioned the two parts, the design piece and the construction piece. Just to clarify, inspection is not a part of your services in construction, it's just staking.
Correct.
And then, so with that answer, just to clarify, Maria, who negotiated the contract, will the city have an additional need for service for inspection on this, or what's the plan there?
Yes, Anne thinks here, but that's typically when the bids come out, we'll have, we'll hire a firm for the inspection of the construction project.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Um, I, I don't, just as a free-market person, I don't love us getting involved at all between the developer and the, and the, and the contractor that they prefer to work with, but there is an interest because we have to take care of these roads and these sewer systems forever. All, all of that being said, you know, we can't do anything about special assessments at this point. I've read through the contract, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the guardrails, and I appreciate our city attorney and, and Mr. Gish working, working together. And can you explain what you've done already with the developer, the work you've already completed, and, and that is normal, is my understanding, for any process at this point?
Yeah, so this particular developer came to us asking if we could assist them with the due diligence and kind of land development of this precinct ground. So they brought us in to just, you know, at risk on their own at first, and we got to a process where they felt satisfied that they could move forward with the development of the property for what they had proposed, a single-family residential. They then proceeded to hire us to help work through the city processes with the plating. This, in this case, I believe the entitled, or the zoning side was probably already set. I can't remember that exactly. Well, we may have actually done some commercial zoning, so forgive me, I don't exactly remember that. But from there, the developer, they did select us early on besides the plating because they were looking for someone to be able to help them to push this project forward. They're, they're very anxious, they're low on their, their number of lots that they have available to build their product, and so they are very anxious to get started. We have the plans already turned in and submitted, and, and hopefully with your blessing, that would allow the city engineer and to be able to proceed with the review of those plans so that we can address any comments she has and allow us to finalize them and go to bid. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Considering the historical basis and the fact that the developers selects the, the engineering services, and that the project is already started and needs to carry forward, I'm going to motion to approve the contract with MKEC related to Skyview at Webb Edition Phase One as presented, an amount not to exceed two-hundred-sixty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, authorized the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, and second by Ms. Hamburg. Any additional questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I have three in favor and two opposed. Welch and Mr. Smith. And that motion passes three to two. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move on to item E. So we have a little bit of an odor issue with one of our, a couple of our lift stations, I think, and so to address hydrogen sulfide odors and pipeline degradation in the sanitary sewer system between the Webb Road and Fifty-third Street North lift stations, a pilot study is recommended. The study will use a chemical to control the issues, and the pilot program includes installing dosing systems at the Webb Road and Fifty-third Street Lifts, North Lift Stations, the regular monitoring and support. The pilot program will conclude with a full report on findings. If successful, the city may, with an annual agreement for the service. Rebecca Lewis with Burns &amp; McDonald is here to answer any questions. Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we've been working on this for almost a year now and have come up with this solution, but, and I stand here for any questions that you have about either the chemical feed or what the impact is to the sanitary sewer, or even to the waste park treatment plant.
I, I want to make certain of one thing. We've talked about this before, and it sounded like a good idea, but even if this works, we're still not committed to continuing it after the test is done, correct?
That's correct. It will come back to the council for consideration.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to push that a little further. So if this works, what would be the long-term cost to do it at every station?
So it'll be, it'll be, it's very dependent on the amount of sulfides that are present at the lift station, what the weather conditions are, and the flow volumes, but we think there'll be around sixty-five thousand, probably won't exceed a hundred-and-twenty thousand. I know that's a wide berth, but it really depends on, on what the dosage rate is needed at that time. There'll be testing done to, to validate those dosages, and they'll back off, you know, it's, and, and what the kind of cool thing is, is they actually have a electronic reader that you can look at that at your office. I don't think you would want to do that. I would, but you should look at that, the, the service provider can look at it and adjust the doses kind of based on live feed. So we aren't just feeding chemical if there's no sulfides detected.
So you're measuring the hydrogen sulfide in there?
Yes.
Becky, just to clarify, that sixty-five to one-twenty, that's the total cost for all of our current lift stations annually? What was that number representing?
Yes, that, that would be the feed rates at the Webb and at the Fifty-third Street.
Where we believe it would be, okay.
Not all lift stations, just those two.
Just those two.
That's correct. That's correct. At this time, when, when they went out and did the study, and based on the measurements that your staff has taken, we determined that really there's, there's only need to be two spots that needs to feed the chemical.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or David.
So you didn't really sell that very well. So, so up to a hundred-and-twenty K a year, if it works, what's the, what's the payback from that?
What's the payback? So the payback is, you'll have a reduction in odors, as well as it should reduce corrosion in the sanitary sewer. So right now, there's some issues on, on one of the sanitary sewer lines, it will, and then kind of some noted corrosion at, near the Webb Road lift station. So that corrosion should not stop, but should decrease.
Do you have any way of putting a number on that corrosion?
I do not. Actually, there's, we're going to work on this for a while and see what happens, and, you know, just kind of take some measurements, and then we may come back with an additional study to look at the condition of the current sanitary sewer system, especially here on Fifty-third Street.
Becky, and we, again, I'm sorry, this took a little, we, we kind of talked about this in budget season, because we have, we have a line item, in case it works, we can purchase some, and, and, but one manhole replacement or recovery, I can't remember the estimated cost on that. It, it was in the fifty thousand, it was pretty expensive. So as much as we can maintain our system without getting corroded and have to replace manholes is the better, better solution with this, and that's why it's a little bit worth the trial period here. We've been seeing some pretty good numbers on the city side as far as testing, but that's kind of required Marty to go flush out about every day, or how many times a week do we go out there, Marty? Two times a week to flush out a lot of our, our lift stations. So we're trying, we're spending some cost on labor on that side, so I think if we, if this works, in the long run, we're gonna, we're gonna save money with replacing manholes and the labor that we're doing to help maintain the odors and the corrosion in our lift station.
Just to clarify, when you say flush out the lift station, you're just mostly just cleaning it, is that right?
Cleaning it, I'm sorry, not flushing, that's a bad word.
Well, I just want to make sure we are on the same page about what we're doing here. So thank you.
Okay, because I was asking about that, too. If we were actually putting water in there to get it to run, I was then gonna ask, would this problem go away as we get more housing built, and would we still need this solution?
So that's a good question. If, if you get more housing, definitely the, the flows will be better, and it'll be, it'll reduce the sulfides. Will the sulfides go away? I would say that might be difficult to determine, but will they improve? I would say yes.
So we might have a lower cost to operate.
Correct.
I, I will tell you, the, the midpoint, Fifty-third Street midpoint, which is down along Fifty-third, almost to Interstate one-thirty-five, it's about two blocks east of one-thirty-five, it has chronically had problems with odor out of there. We do have a monitor in there, they've done some things there, it seems to be working, but it's, you know, that's all Bell, almost exclusively Bel Air sewage going through there.
We do have a monitor in there. They've done some things there. It seems to be working, but it's, you know, that's all about, almost exclusively Bel Air sewage going through there. Yeah, that's a lot further down the line. Yeah.
But what, what's going to be kind of neat about this chemical, it'll actually bind the sulfites that are in, in solution. And it won't release there at the, the midpoint or even at the wastewater plant. I know we live not too far from the wastewater plant. When I drive by, we notice, we know when we're having some issues. So this iron should help that solution. Well, again, I'm not going to sit here and say there's never going to be any odors, but it will improve it.
We're only 40% of what goes in there, right?
That's right.
One more follow-up, Becky, and I know that this is going to happen. Like, we did that study on those manholes that are in bad shape. This is not going to fix that. Those are probably, I'll just say, maybe too far gone. That's the purpose of the study is to figure out what to do with that now. This is more to prevent or limit damage on that system for the future. But there still might be some stuff separate from this that we're going to have to do infrastructure-wise to repair damage.
That's correct. And actually, they'll probably, they'll probably do a study just to assess the, the condition of the manholes. That we had a contractor ready to do that and it was in such bad shape that they could, weren't not able to complete that job.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move, we approve the agreement with USPS Technologies for Odor and Corrosion Controlled Pilot Study and Sewer Collection System as presented at a cost not to exceed $14,904 and authorize all required signatures.
Well, second.
The motion by Mr. Dean and second by Mr. Welch. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one with Mr.
Mr. David.
David. Good to write D.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move on to item F. This, this is contract to do multi-use path on 53rd Street. So in 2024, we constructed, reconstructed 53rd Street and planned for sidewalk multi-use path to be installed along 53rd Street from Woodlong to Oliver. The city applied for grant funding from WAMPO in 2023 to assist the construction of the multi-use path. The city was awarded the grant with the amount of $292,242 and accepted an agreement with KDOT in July of 2025. In early 2025, engineers on the project experienced delays as the city needed to ensure compliance with KDOT standards and processes. Since that time, construction cost estimates have risen, resulting in an increase in city share of the cost. Garver was recently tasked to review the project and evaluate what cost drivers might have been involved in the higher than anticipated cost of the project. So your packet staffers provided a report that includes Garver's findings. And Ken Lee is here to present and answer questions. Mr. Lee.
Good evening. Ken Lee with Garver, 1995 Midfield Road. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about the project tonight. Not happy to be the circumstances of the discussion, of course, but the, the project, we actually started this project. As he's, as Mayor Benage said, a little over a year and a half, over a little over a year ago. And our initial estimate was in the $350,000 range. And that's, that was based on just standard bid prices that we had seen on the projects. And over the past year, we've seen prices rise. And so we had projected, our project estimates over the past year and a half have been rising slowly over time. The biggest jump that we saw was when we were going through PSNE with KDOT. That's their final review process where they do the final request for changes in the plans. And, and they had requested at that point fairly significant increases in the amount of erosion control, traffic control and those kind of items. And so our final estimate that we turned into KDOT for the project was $446,000. So it's a significant increase. The, the low bid on the project is, my understanding is $589,000. And so as Mayor Benage said, he asked us with tasking, tasked us with looking into that a little bit more. So I spoke to one of the contractors that bid on the project and asked him, what happened here? Why was our estimate off? And what they told me was, is that 10 to 15% of the project cost is just by virtue of working on a KDOT project. The extra documentation required on working with them, the extra hoops they have to jump through, the, the Buy American clauses and just the, the wage, the wage factors, the other things that go into the project, 10 to 15% of the cost is just that. So on a project this size, something on the order of $50,000 to $80,000 of the cost is just because it's a KDOT project. And I'll just be frank, we did not factor that in as much as we should have. The other issue and probably the larger cost driver on this one was the fact that there's a series of high line poles running on the south side of the roadway there. And combined with the street ditch, normally those aren't really a big deal. You can just run your concrete trucks directly adjacent to them, swing your boom over, have your little concrete flume and just dump the concrete into it. But because of the ditch, they can't do that. They can't do their normal process. So they have to get a boom truck. They'd normally do that. But the high line poles, the contractor I talked to said that prevents them from being able to do that. So what they were planning on doing with, with their bid would be that they would be taking like Bobcats, they'd be putting little dump wagons on the front of them. And they'd be hauling the, hauling the concrete in a bucket load at a time into the site, a little bit more than a bucket load at a time. But they said that was going to significantly increase the amount of effort on the project. And that was actually the biggest cost driver on it. Unfortunately, KDOT doesn't share bid tabulations prior to acceptance of the award. So I can't look at it and say specifically this or that was a cost driver because I haven't been able to see those. But in my conversations with them, that was the discussion. I will say that if the city does decide to proceed with the project tonight, one of our goals would be to work with KDOT and city staff to look and see, once we do see the, the bids and the, the low bid information is to see if there's any value engineering that can be done to reduce that erosion control that's being, that was required. Because that alone was like 40 or $50,000 of the cost of the project is erosion control. So we're going to see if there's opportunities to do that. And if there's anything else we could do and working with the low bidder to see what we can do. There's obviously no guarantees in life, but I know that that's the one thing we would commit to do is trying to see what opportunities there are for that. So if that had taken any questions you might have.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your willingness to do that, look at the value engineering possibilities. It's very disheartening to have a project almost doubling cost when you thought you're going to get the savings here. And the savings is maybe $50,000 and a delay of a year plus, a year plus by, by doing that. So that's pretty disheartening and hopefully we can get some better things done after we get, get through that. So I appreciate your willingness to help.
Mr. Mayor.
I think Ms. Hamburg wants
Nope, go for it. Emily, it's you.
I just had a quick question. You mentioned that you didn't factor in the KDOT project. Do you guys use a rule of thumb or a percentage, or was it just purely an oversight on the project?
So what we did is we, when we set the original project estimate up, we used bid prices that we always use that they're, they're tried and true. We do a lot of concrete sidewalks. So we know how much it typically costs per square yard for, for concrete sidewalk or square foot, I should say. So we have a pretty good feel for that. And we did add contingencies 10 to 15%. But just at the end of the day, just the combination of prices rising over the last several years. That combined with that took, took all of that away. And then, like I said, when we got to the final through the PSNE, on a normal project like this, if you were doing it like Wichita, Bel Air, any of the communities around here, you just have a rolling project where you just have the truck, you got, you got flags around the truck and you just work. You just don't really worry much about. We had to add 15 pages of traffic control details into the plans. It's just stuff like that, that they wanted every scenario covered. And that's just the nature of working with them. And that's what we're told anyway.
Thank you. So with the, without a time machine to go back and, you know, maybe just do it ourselves or the path I see forward from your notes here is we're still better off just moving forward with the KDOT and maybe doing some value engineering. Or what are your thoughts on rebidding or waiting, but we have to get WAMPO approval, right?
Yeah. In, in my conversation with the contractor, your savings are not going to outweigh the KDOT participation by a significant factor. The KDOT, the KDOT participation is still significant.
And in terms of, is there an option to rebid it through?
So, yeah. And, and actually, I guess, let me just touch on that. I did talk to Matthew Graham about what the options were for the project. And one of them is to accept the bid and just move forward. The second option is to reject the bids and rebid it at a later date as it is and just hope that prices get better. And the third option is to reject the bid, redesign the project and then attempt to rebid. That was the three options he presented to us. I did talk about the city just rejecting it and taking the project on itself. And he, he just, he didn't even hear the words I was saying on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Dean was next. Thank you.
Sorry, Emily. First, I wanted to state there were four bidders on this and the company I worked for a while did not bid on this KDOT project. But I do have some thoughts. I have some comments. So first, the low bid, one of four, which is pretty decent actually in the current market, was 35,000 low or 6% low. That's a, you know, round numbers here. Frustrating. It's a frustrating deal. It's a drawn out process. Accepting the grant with, with KDOT would have been much more cost effective, obviously, to have included this in our original street reconstruction project. But that wasn't in the cards considering the poor road condition. We made that decision as a council. And I think that was the right decision. I'm not questioning that decision. But that's, this is sort of a unintended consequence, I think. When we build a path, it's less effective than building a road with the path. So I'll just say that plainly. The construction bids were competitive with four bidders. Cost isn't going down. This is a clear indication of a market cost. The actual cost of the project are what they are. It's, it's a bid. Early budget estimates were not informed well. I think that's obvious here, not, not to beat you down, but that's just true. When we get construction bids, that's the, the cost of the reality that we're in. Considering the ditch and the rural setup, there isn't much to do to bring that cost down. I don't see the value engineering that you're mentioning. That's just my opinion. I'm just trying to be honest with expectations. It's likely the cost will be more, given the economics and the smaller size of the project, if we were to rebid this or do it on our own. City share grew from an early estimate of 141K to 303, 34K, roughly 193,000, more than double our, our initial cost. The grant does still cover 292,000 of the 589, which is roughly 50% of the project. So that is a significant piece. So those are things I'm thinking of. One other thing to mention before I have a few questions to ask ourself is relationships, relationships to consider. WAMPO and KDOT will be involved with lots of our future projects. We are, we are moving forward as a city. We are growing. There's many projects on the horizon, including our next big one, 45th, that we all hope will move forward immediately following our conclusion of repairs on Woodlong. That is going to be a significant project that we are partnering and hope to partner with for grant funding on contractors. This is another relationship I'll point out. When we have four bids, the local companies spend their time and their money to propose. If a competitive bid, they assume the project will move forward, assuming it has funding. This is something that we need to consider. When canceling a rebidding, that is not a positive sign for the industry to want to continue to bid for an owner. And I'm not pointing out Bel Air specifically. That's just a, a decision that contractors make when they look to work. We are a growing city. We want to be a city that folks want to work, work with and work for so that we can continue to, to meet that demand. The questions we should be asking ourselves, do we value connecting our community and investments in our active transportation and healthy recreation options? I personally say yes, we do. I think that's shown many times that we value that. How do we consider funding it? We are still under the original project temp note, as our city manager pointed out. So in, in my mind, it is a frustrating process. We have certainly not made the mark. This is not acceptable. We need to do better. But it is within the budget when considering those considerations. Next time, knowing what we have learned, should we consider if developing these smaller projects as a city makes more sense than doing a grant? And focus our grant efforts on bigger stuff where the value of that grant will be spread across additional costs and time on a larger project such as a 45th Street project? I think those are all thoughts and questions we should be asking ourself as we consider this item. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
So I was just wondering, is there adequate easement on the south side of the sidewalk to drive vehicles or is there not?
Yeah, we, we looked at that and because of the residential development that's already in place, it would be, it would be difficult. And in some places there's berms and one other area, there's a pond. And so there's, there's physical obstacles. Several, two other areas with ponds. So there's physical obstacles that would prevent that from being an option. Because yeah, we did look at that. And I appreciate the question.
Right, thanks.
Okay, I want to ask this because I, I think you said it, but I haven't heard it in a very concise sentence. If we were to do this project ourselves, we would lose matching funds and it would actually end up costing the city more than it's going to if we accept the bid as is.
Correct. It would be a significant increase.
So then there's no reason not to move forward and take this and just go on with life. So I motion to adopt resolution approving KDOT authority to award contract for construction of multi-use path on East 53rd Street, pledge 335,000 in city funds and authorize city staff and the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Welch and second by Mr. Dean. Any additional questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question. When do you anticipate beginning and completion of this project?
Right now, just being bluntly honest with you, as far as KDOT's processes, if, if you get notification, I would imagine it would be, I would guess it's probably, and Tyler, you may have a better feel for this, but I would guess probably four to six weeks before project, any construction could start.
Yeah, I don't know what their contract. I'm sure there was a late start date in the contract or in the bid.
And I haven't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen that. As far as completion time, it's going to be completely weather dependent. The good thing about concrete is if you're above freezing and such, you can, you can do work in a lot of conditions that you wouldn't be able to work on a regular asphalt street. So depending on the kind of weather you have over in the next couple of months, I mean, it, it's highly variable depending on the weather. But that's the good thing about the concrete pavement. As long as it's not freezing, if they can get their subgrade taken care of, they can work in a lot of different conditions.
If you had perfect weather, how long would this project take?
Um, I, I would imagine it's probably, again, the complication of hauling in the concrete probably changes things. I would guess this is probably closer to a six week part, six week project.
Okay, so after the new year.
If it was, yeah, if it was perfect, if it was perfect conditions and they could pump it, this is a project that'd take just three, three or four weeks. But I imagine they're going to lose a couple of extra weeks because of the pumping issues that were brought to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
So, so back to Emily's question, start after the year or get it done this year?
I don't, I don't know the KDOT contract on that, so I can't give a specific date. At this point, I would guess the earliest start date is probably going to be in December. Could be mid-October, but I, or mid-November, but I don't know that, I don't know, I don't have their contract terms, so.
Any other questions or concerns before we call for a vote? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion on the table to adopt this resolution made by Mr. Welch and second by Mr. Dean. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. Next is executive session and I think I need to know how much time we need. 30 minutes? Okay, so we need two executive sessions. The first one, 30 minutes and entertain a motion for
Can I ask for a five-minute break before we go into executive session?
Yeah, certainly.
Make a motion that we take a five-minute break.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, second by Mr. Dean, five-minute break. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Too bad, we're going to break anyway. So the motion carries five to zero. The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session, nobody action was taken. We're ready to move on to the next Item B Executive Session and I think we were requested ten minutes for this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we recess into executive session for preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property. The discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6 and invite the city manager and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a period of ten minutes and the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 9:11 PM.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, second by Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Executive session for ten minutes. Call the meeting back to order. Held an executive session, no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to the next item of discussions and future issues. We have a workshop next Thursday, no, next Tuesday, October 14th at 7:00 PM. I hope that works for everybody. Kind of our regular schedule, but...
Yep.
Anything you want to add to that?
We got 2026 street plan we're gonna talk about, which is always good. As you know, we're, last year we did it early, and I think it's more important than ever to do it early. So we're gonna talk 2026 street maintenance plan. Paul will be here to talk about short-term rentals, and then we're, I believe, we'll be here for airport zoning as well. So it might be a little bit, but those three items are what I have on the list right now.
Ted, just to clarify on the street maintenance, is your goal to try to bid that by the end of the year? So that starts early next year?
That would be the goal, because, yeah.
I'm just throwing that out there. I know they've said that before, but...
That, that works best, yeah.
Okay. Airport zoning, we got issues, or they're just concerns that we need to place restrictions in there?
This is what the city of Wichita was requesting that we consider.
Okay, all right. I think I remember that discussion, so, okay, that's fine, yeah. All right, good. Anything else we're gonna need to discuss of future issues? If not, we can move on to adjournment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, the second by Ms. Hamburg. All payers say aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion is five to zero. We are adjourned. See everybody next Tuesday.